All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular city council meeting for November 26, 2018. The time is 7:30. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Protemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilwoman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilman Soltis and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight, we are coming off of the Thanksgiving holiday where all of us were fortunate enough to have more food and enjoyment with company, but there are less fortunate ones, more than we can imagine. Over 5,000 Madison Heights residents live below poverty level and go hungry. Fifteen of those are children that go hungry. I want to quote from newly declared Saint Mother Teresa, "At the end of life, we will not be judged by how many diplomas we have received, or how much money we have made, or how many great things we have done. We'll be judged by, 'I was hungry and you gave me something to eat; I was naked and you clothed me; I was homeless and you took me in.'" Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?[108.61][108.61](Laughter) All right, there are no additions or deletions. There are also no public hearings, so we can go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone from the public to address city council on any subject. We welcome all comments to be made at the microphone in the center. It'd be helpful, but it's not required, if you give your name, address, and any professional or charitable affiliation you have. And it'd also be polite of you if you could limit your comments to three minutes or less. And if you go on too long, I'll politely interrupt you, but don't take any offense to that. So, meeting is open to the public. Anyone that'd like to address council should begin so right now, please. Good evening, hi.
Hi, my name is Tony Hall. I live 410 East 13 Mile Road, apartment 102.
Welcome, Tony.
I have thank you cards and letters about the issue about Madison Heights.
Thank you, I'll accept those from you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, I'll be sure to pass these out, thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Rico Garcia, and I live on 285-28 Park Court. My fellow classmates and I believe Madison Heights should opt out of recreational marijuana businesses. We made that decision because we know what marijuana can do to people, and I know that teenagers already drive high every day, and crime rates will probably go up. For example, in Colorado, from 2013 to 2016, the crime rates increased by 11 percent after the legalization of marijuana. Another example, Ms. Heisler mentioned a case where a man was under the influence of marijuana, and he killed his wife as well as himself, something he wouldn't do when he was sober. Marijuana can also have an effect on mental health. Studies show assertion of schizophrenia and depression. Also, that people can experience memory loss. By opting out, it reduces the risk people driving under the influence, children getting a hold of marijuana, and people getting into more drugs besides marijuana due to it being a gateway drug.
Thank you, very good. Would anyone else like to address city council? Welcome, thanks for joining us.
My name is Terrence. I am a student at Lanfor High School. Based on numerous facts, I believe that Madison Heights should not opt out of having recreational marijuana dispensaries. First, recreational marijuana industries would bring in a very large amount of money. Just look at Canada and Colorado. Colorado brought in $1 billion in 2015, and Canada is projected to bring in $7 billion in a year. If all of Michigan opt in, each city would make possibly up to $400,000. Not only will it boost the economy, it will create jobs and new businesses could pop up. By 2021, it is estimated that 292,000 people will be hired into the marijuana industry. Madison Heights should be a part of that. The revenue from the marijuana industry can be fixed, can be used to fix the roads, further our school technologies, and for making our city bigger and better. The money can also be used to fund our police, just like alcohol, you cannot drive under the influence of marijuana. So, our police will be out watching. Another reason to have dispensaries in Madison Heights is that it will bring in tourists. We are one of few states to have recreational marijuana. If we stay in, we will have more tourists, making our economy even better. Since they will probably stay in hotels, restaurants, and other businesses, they will get more money out of it. In every aspect, marijuana boosts the economy. Another issue would be the zoning, but there is a solution for that. Madison Heights has some businesses that are not doing well and are just an eyesore. We can convert the old stores into a dispensary, a growing facility, or a testing lot. Since these will do better than the old stores, it just keeps adding the revenue. Therefore, Madison Heights should consider having dispensaries in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Alex Wooton. I live at 299 Sonia Avenue. I think we should stay in because it would allow more restrictions on who can buy it, like you would have to actually have an ID or a card to buy it at a, I'm sorry, at a government facility, instead of just being able to pull out like $20 from your pocket and just drop a guy on the corner of the street. Also, it would create a lot of jobs for my peers and I in the future, and that's all we have, so, thank you.
Thank you, very good. Anyone else like to address city council?
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Jesslyn Wayal, and I live at 30783 Brush Street, and I am here at 7:30 at a school night because this is a topic that affects me and my friends. Marijuana is in my school, and it's something that I smell off of people on the daily, no matter how much Axe or Old Spice they try to cover it up with. For weeks, my team has researched and spoke with many different council members and officials who shared very important information with my class. Marijuana is said by other groups is harmful and under the wrong use can cause many mishaps. Shouldn't the city do everything it can to protect me and my colleagues? The answer is obviously yes, but the how is more conflicting. How is to simply legalize it. With extra tax dollars from users, although not as large as some may hope, it'll still be enough to hire at least one more police officer and perhaps get more supplies for our different districts. It could even push more awareness on proper use and education on the drug itself. You all know how teenagers are, no matter what, they're going to find a way to get it, and although I don't encourage it, I believe that many would rest easier knowing people my age are smoking something that has been regulated and seen by many doctors before it goes into their system compared to a joint a sketchy guy from down the street gave them for 20. Mayor Hartwell has stated that if or when these dispensaries go up, they will be out of sight and out of mind in mostly places such as the factory districts, and they will be guarded with fences and security. Others have spoken shortly about how they believe marijuana simply doesn't have enough regulations to be allowed in our city, and to that, I say, let's just put those regulations on. Regulations and safety is what any city could always use more of, and if you truly want to protect the kids and help us, like many of you claim to, you'll come to the realization that allowing dispensaries will help our communities, our finances, and our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council?
Hi there, Kyle Gerald, 2827 Phillips Avenue in Berkeley, Michigan, and I'm a teacher at Lanfor High School. I'd just like to thank all the cooperation and volunteer from the community and all the experts that got to work with my students and help them research and process this issue and to, you know, teach them how municipal government works and all the many entities, and that goes out to the community service organizations and local communities that did so as well. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald. Any other students, would they like to speak tonight? All right, meeting is still open to the public, but to the students, thank you for researching this subject. You were very deliberative in your studies, you were very open-minded, and we really appreciate the research you did. You should thank your teachers for the connections they made with all the different levels of government, federal government and local government. I think that was a really special opportunity for the students to see, and of course, you're always welcome back to City Hall, and I hope when you're 18 that you consider running for office, and I hope you always vote. You can vote for me, too, if you want, or you could run against me. But it's so important that we hear your voice, even if you don't vote, even if you aren't a citizen, your voice is very important to me. So, thank you, thank you to the teachers. It's nice to have former Councilman Gerald's back in our chambers. If you want to come back, for old time's sakes, you can. But thank you, this time is not about me. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? The meeting is open to the public. All right, thanks. No one else is asked to be recognized, so we can continue on the agenda. We have two communications. The first one is item C1 from Christian Tecker. It says resignation from the zoning board of appeals. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, members of the zoning board of appeals, Christian Tecker has submitted his resignation from the board. Staff recommends that council accept this resignation and declare this seat vacant.
What's the wish to city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council accept the resignation of Mr. Tecker, issue the appropriate resolution of thanks, and declare the seat vacant.
Thank you, is there support?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Protemblis, to accept the resignation of Mr. Tecker, declare his seat vacant, and issue a thankful proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next communication is item C2 from the city auditors, Plant Moran. It's the financial audit presentation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, representatives from Plant Moran, Lisa Manetta and Keith Shemansky are here tonight to give the annual financial presentation for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. After the city councils had an opportunity to hear this report and presentation, staff and I would recommend that you receive and file this report.
Thanks. If I forgot to say, the last motion carries. Thank you, welcome tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Very happy to be here tonight. Again, my name is Lisa Manetta, and I'm a partner with the governmental audit practice with Plant Moran, and very pleased to serve as the auditors of the city. With me is Keith Shemansky, who is a manager who oversees the day-to-day happenings within the audits, and Keith will give us a brief overview, as in previous years, on the financial results for the city. But before we launch into that, just some brief comments. So, as the now city manager can attest to, it is a fairly exhaustive process that we go through in auditing the books and records of the city over the course of several weeks, and the end result of that is for us to issue an opinion on the audited financial statement, which you should have received as a result of those procedures. The data contained in the audit report is put together by the finance department. We compile that into the financial statement and perform procedures in order to be able to give an opinion as to whether that information in there is properly stated in accordance with all rules and regulations that govern the reporting by governmental entities, which, again, this year, we have issued what we refer to as an unmodified opinion, which means that everything is materially correct and can be relied upon as being in accordance with those financial standards. What that opinion doesn't really get into is overall the financial results, which, again, Keith will go into in greater detail, but, you know, I think it is an overall, I would use the term cautiously optimistic, so we did see an increase to fund balance for the city for the year ended June 30 of 2018, but similar to most communities here in southeast Michigan, there are still challenges ahead when looking at things like capital improvements, improvements to infrastructure needs that exist, and also the benefits promised to retirees both in pension and retiree healthcare. So, we are always happy to share that there are increases that we've seen to various revenue sources. The city did increase fund balance, but certainly still challenges ahead to be considered when we look out five, 10 years down the road. So, with that, I will turn it over to Keith, but we're happy to answer questions at any point along the way.
Good evening. Rather than going through the nearly 80 pages of the financial statements, we've boiled down the highlights into just about five graphs for you, beginning with a few slides on the general fund. Slide number one is a five-year history of general fund revenues, broken out by category. Total revenue in 2018 was about $28.4 million, which was an increase of 5% compared to 2017. The majority of that increase was due to property tax revenue. A small portion of that was due to a modest increase in taxable value, but the majority of it was an increase in the millage rate for the police and fire retiree benefits. Second-largest revenue category for the city is the state and federal sources, which is primarily state-shared revenue. That revenue source increased about $100,000 compared to the previous year, and also included in there are your dispersments from the local community stabilization authority for lost personal property taxes, as well as excess revenues that they collected. That total from that agency increased by about $300,000 compared to 2017. So, those state items, along with the increased property taxes, accounted for the majority of the increased revenues in 2018. Second slide is a similar five-year comparison, broken out by expenditure category. As is typical of local units of government, public safety is the largest category of expenditures, making up a little bit more than half of the total general fund expenditures, and the dollar amount in that category was fairly consistent with what it was a year ago. Total expenditures in the general fund decreased by about $1.3 million, and that decrease was largely in the general government category and was primarily driven by a reduction in the contributions to retiree healthcare plans. Outside of that decrease and a small decrease in the debt administration category, you can see that the expenditure categories were all fairly consistent with a year ago. Then on slide number three, we put the revenues side by side with the expenditures. As you can see, for 2018, the revenues exceeded the expenditures by about $800,000, and that led to an increase in fund balance of a similar amount. We've also charted in the lines the council's target minimum fund balance, along with the actual unrestricted fund balance of the general fund. The target minimum is set at two months' worth of operating expenses plus one year of debt service. So, for 2018, that target was about $5.6 million. The actual unrestricted fund balance was $7.3 million, so you're comfortably above the target minimum. Well, those are great short-term results. As Lisa mentioned, there are some long-term challenges still facing the city, and two of those are the pension and retiree healthcare benefits promised. So, here we have the four plans of the city and their funding progress to date. The general employees' pension plan, for which you issued pension bonds a year or two ago, is more than 100% funded. It has a net pension asset of more than $2 million, but the other three plans are all in underfunded status. The police and fire pension plan is 52% funded. The police and fire OPAP plan is 28% funded, and the general OPAP plan is 32% funded. So, those unfunded amounts combined to be more than $100 million in unfunded liabilities to retirees. So, while, again, it was a positive year for the general fund, there are some long-term challenges ahead. These liabilities do not have to be paid off in the short term. The actuary gives you required contributions that they recommend making on an annual basis. In the case of the pension plans, the city has always made at least those minimum required contributions to the plans, but nevertheless find themselves in the funding situation that they are in. In the case of retiree healthcare, the city continues to make pay-as-you-go premium payments for current benefits as they become due, as well as making some advanced funding contributions to the trust on a discretionary basis. Then finally, switching gears one more time, on the last slide, we have a six-year history of operating revenues and expenditures in the water and sewer fund. You can see 2018 is a bit different than the other years in that the operating revenues were slightly less than the operating expenses. A majority of that was due to a conscious decision on the city's part to no longer include financing of the drained debt through the rates, which are operating revenues, and instead levy a property tax millage, which is a non-operating revenue, and no longer included in the blue category. So, that millage brought in about $876,000 of revenue in the last year. If you were to add that to the operating revenues, they'd be essentially equal to the operating expenses for the year. But the fund did spend some unrestricted net position, as well as some cash and investments for the year. Those amounts decreased compared to 2017, but still remain very strong compared to annual operating expenses. So, we simply urge the city to continue to keep an eye on those reserves, keeping in mind the potential needs for emergency replacements, future capital needs, and debt service going forward. Are there any questions on any of the financial results? Correct? I will turn it back over to Lisa.
Thanks, Keith. The other packet of information that you should have received, along with the financial statement, is our letters and communications to the board, or to the city council, which we are required to make on an annual basis, along with our report. We've broken down the letter into three sections, which I will give an overview of each of them. The first section of the letter gets into any internal control items that we might note through the course of the audit. We are required to make those communications to you on an annual basis. In the current year, we did report in this letter that during the course of the audit, we did find two journal entries that we suggested to be posted in order to correct the financial statements, and those have been posted and are corrected within the report that you received. The second section of the audit of the letter are communications about, really, how did the audit process go? And so, in here, a few things to highlight. We did bring to your attention that during 2018, the city did adopt new standards related to the accounting for retiree healthcare. As Keith had shown on the slide, a couple slides ago, we are now required, within the financial report, to record a liability for those unfunded status of the retiree healthcare plans, which is something different that doesn't impact the general fund and how its accounting is done, but if you look at the earlier pages of the financial report, you'll see a very large retiree healthcare liability that is now recorded. This letter also talks about any significant estimates that are made within the financial statements, just to bring to your attention and the reader's attention if there are any numbers that are inherently less, have more judgment involved with them, and again, we point out that the city hires an actuary to calculate the liabilities for retiree healthcare and pension, just given the number of assumptions that go into figuring out and estimating what those liabilities are. Beyond that, it's a very clean letter that we've included in here. We had no significant difficulties in performing the audit and generally performed it according to the scope and timing that we anticipated at the beginning and had communicated to the city council. The third section of the letter has various legislative updates. Clearly, there have been a lot of new things coming down from the state in terms of changes to the chart of accounts and additional reporting that's required related to retiree healthcare and pensions, so we encourage you to read through those as well in greater detail, and we're happy to answer any questions at any time regarding those matters. So, that concludes our overview of the audit report. Again, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Keith. To open discussion, could I have a motion to receive and file the city auditor's report?
Your honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Ortemblis.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Protemblis, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to receive and file the city auditor's annual report. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Normally, I talk about, this evening, I talk about income and the future. Tonight, I really think there's only one issue that really hangs over the long-term interests of the community. I appreciate that you're recognizing the infrastructure issues that confront us, but $100 million worth of unfunded liability is the 600-pound gorilla in the room every time we get together to talk about budgets. I don't know if you happened to catch it or not, a few weeks ago, there was a program on PBS, and it focused on the state of Kentucky and the teachers' pension at that time, and I had a friend who was on the phone with me about 11:30. He did your sort of work for many years, and he said, "You know, given the right trigger, the state of Kentucky could be the city of Madison Heights, and the police," pardon me, "the teachers' union could be your police and fire. It just needs the appropriate trigger." In the case of Kentucky, it was a downturn in the economy. I guess my question to you is, what are the triggers? What are the boundaries? When do we get into trouble? We've got $100 million hanging out there. Eventually, the state's going to make us do something about it. If not, our unions are going to want us to do something about it when, I mean, I guess I'm asking for your analysis of, a little more detailed analysis of the entire issue with respect to OPAP and pensions. I mean, because, and we're not the only community, I don't want to give anybody the wrong impression.
Right, no, certainly.
It's us and everybody else. It's a very big life vote, but...
Yes, and so, I think certainly we've seen that the state is beginning, has, you know, over the years, began taking more steps, at least to increase awareness and to make sure that the state is aware and that that is being publicized where the funding status is at. Certainly, there's been a lot more scrutiny in looking at those assumptions that are being used, because that is a concern, because it is such a large estimate. We're talking about anticipating return on investments, what are healthcare costs going to do, and as you pointed out, the city of Madison Heights certainly is not alone in this concern and looking for ways to look at the benefits being provided. Is there, are there ways to reduce the cost there, different alternatives that are allowable clearly under the restrictions of collective bargaining agreements, and looking for ways to, first off, address the liability, and are there ways to decrease it, and then certainly trying to fund as much as possible so that the city can take advantage of increased rate of return from the investments that are allowable under Public Act 314. So, I think it's looking at both sides of the equation to put away as much as is possible in order to start getting those higher returns and have funds available to pay those liabilities.
Am I reasonable in saying that a city the size of Madison Heights can't borrow its way out of that? I mean, could we, we couldn't possibly float that much bonds or anything like that, right?
I think that would be a large, that would be a large burden to take on at this point, so it would be something to be...
So, presumably, then, the solution finds itself in some sort of a diversion of the income stream out of general funds, right?
Yes, so, it's a balance of all of the needs of the city and certainly finding a way, again, to pre-fund as much as is prudent under the current, what's allowed under the budget, and getting that put away to start increasing returns.
Is your, have your legislative contacts at all indicated whether or not the state might be looking to assist? I mean, let's be honest, when they adjusted the actuarial tables, updated it from the late '70s, I was still in high school the last time they, you know, and then they changed it, what was it, five, six years ago, something? That had a significant, is there any indication at all of state assistance, state help, state remedies? Well, that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't fall under the category of, "No, thanks, we'll take care of it ourselves," right?
I'm not aware of any plans at this point by the state in providing assistance in this, other than, again, requesting information and really encouraging communities to look at it through the budget process and be forward-looking with it.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? All right, we can vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Keith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, our reports. We have three this evening. The first is item D1 from the Community Development Director. It's the Program Year 2019 CDBG application. Mrs. Marsh?
Oakland County has advised the city that our allocation for Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funding for Program Year 2019 will be approximately $115,589. This amount could change depending upon future actions taken by HUD and/or Congress prior to actual receipt of these funds. Pursuant to federal guidelines, the CDBG Review Committee held a public hearing on November 8th for the purpose of receiving public info regarding the past performance of CDBG funding and the eligible activities to be included in the fiscal year 2019 CDBG application. At this meeting, the committee also reviewed the proposed application and recommended approval of the following CDBG activities: code enforcement for $80,000 and public services, which would be yard waste of $35,000, yard services, I mean, not yard waste, of $35,589. Counsel has been provided with the Community Development Block Grant summary, which outlines this year's proposed allocation of CDBG funds and provides a comprehensive review with the previous two years. This year's allocation is proposed to continue public services or yard services expenditures at existing client service levels for mowing and low-to-moderate income and disabled seniors, and includes a proposed increase to provide fall leaf cleanup assistance as well. As with previous years, one full-time code enforcement officer is funded. The reduction in code enforcement from last year does not reflect a reduction in that service. Funding years for CDBG overlap, and the city's fiscal year allowing for the use of two-years CDBG funding for code enforcement. In other words, we will be fully funding one code enforcement position from the 2018 and 2019 CDBG funding as in years past. Staff and I concur with the recommendation of the CDBG Review Committee and recommend that City Council approve the fiscal year 2019 CDBG application as proposed. If City Council concurs, appropriate action would be to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the fiscal year 2019 application and any supporting documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council concur with the staff recommendation and approve the 2019 Community Development Block Grant application. Specifically, we approve the attached resolution, which would authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the 2019 application and any supporting documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to concur with the staff recommendation to approve the 2019 CDBG application and authorize the clerk and the mayor to sign on behalf of the city at the number specified. Is there discussion? Oh, I was hoping to get some more information about Haven's request. I mean, is that even an allowable expense for CDBG funds?
We'd have to reduce our services that we provide to the seniors, but Jim Schaefer was at the meeting and can...
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, that is an expense that is permitted under CDBG guidelines. The city has never funded Haven through CDBG funding. Prior to the recession, I'm not sure exactly how many years, but there used to be a small stipend that was allocated to Haven through the general fund, but they have not ever been allocated CDBG funding. If council wanted to do something along those lines, then it would have to reduce by a like amount one of the other line items.
Okay. And could you highlight the history with the park's refurbishment, when that happened and what that included?
Mr. Mayor, that was a one-time, we received a directive from the county that they had a one-time allotment of $50,201 that was available to us, and we had an extremely short period of time to comb our capital projects. The only project that met the requirements, because it had to be in certain areas of the city, was the Ambassador Park parking lot. That project was allocated and completed, and we expect our $50,201 reimbursement from the county any day now.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Schaefer. Any other discussion from council? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report on our agenda is item D2 from the DPS Director, the Great Lakes Water Authority Water Contract Amendment. Mrs. Marsh?
At the request of the Great Lakes Water Authority or GLWA members, GLWA has aligned all their water contract reopeners so that they occur the same year. In January of this year, the city received a letter from GLWA CEO to schedule and prepare for an upcoming water contract re-opener. As noted in this letter, a significant reduction in the validity of the charges would occur with all contracts being reopened in the same year, as opposed to one-third of the customers annually. For Madison Heights, this meant reopening our water contract one year early. The city's water contract consultant, staff and I, met with GLWA on September 24th to discuss the contract alignment process, along with the city's maximum day usage and peak hour calculations, items which have a direct impact on our water rates. We have requested a reduction in both. Given trends and historical data for Madison Heights, we have requested 11% reduction in maximum day usage and a 5% reduction in peak hour. Given the amendment exclusively addresses the periodic review and opener sections of this existing contract, which benefit the city and our residents and businesses, staff and I request that City Council approve Amendment Number Three to our existing water service contract with GLWA and authorize the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Scott.
I move for City Council to approve Amendment Number Three to our existing water service contract with Great Lakes Water Authority and authorize the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. Motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve the amendment with the Great Lakes Water Authority and authorize, who are we authorizing? The mayor, city manager, and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Is there discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I have the DPS Director answer a few questions, please?
Yes.
So, can you break this down for us a little bit, more in layman terms? I mean, so they're allowing us to reopen the contract, and then they're allowing us to reduce what we think is accordingly fit for the city?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, Council. To try and just really boil this thing down, we would be meeting with GLWA next year anyways, but they've been hearing from their members that because customers are opening up every three years, that's produced a little bit of volatility with rates, because they've got a third of their customers opening, the third the next year. So, they're seeing reductions with some customers, and then the customers that don't have the opportunity to reopen somewhat absorb those costs. So, what they heard from their members was, let's get everybody on the same schedule. So, in '17, they met with about half of their members, and then in '18, they met with the other half, including us. And then, in 2022, we'll all meet again. Two of the things that they look at that was mentioned in the city manager's report, we take a strong look at with them, and we say, Madison Heights' water trends in terms of usage is trending downward, and those things have an impact on our rates. Why not reduce them? Now, if something changed in Madison Heights in the next couple of years where we had a big business go in, or we saw water consumption go up, we would still have the opportunity to approach GLWA and say, hey, we've seen a spike. We think we're going to go above those numbers, because they will penalize you for going above those numbers that we put in the water contract. We don't anticipate that. So, all this really is, is to say, hey, in our current contract, we need to realign when we're meeting. That's the first piece. And while we're doing that, let's look at Exhibit A and B, and let's get those cleaned up. That's really it.
Can I ask you, in your estimation, then, why do you think the rates went down or the usage?
Irrigation of lawns is one thing. I think businesses change a little bit. I mean, we still have some big water users in Madison Heights, but ever since the onset of the recession, we've just seen water usage trend downward since 2008 and longer.
Now, I know that we have a minimum pay bill, isn't that correct? If you, we're getting charged, every resident's getting charged a certain amount, a bottom number, regardless if they actually use it or not. Has that changed at all?
No, that's a model on our end in terms of minimum water use.
And then, what about the, I know before, when this first, the GLWA became in existence, I think they had a, the first year was a 4% increase, but the city buffered that for the residents. What's the rate going up? Has it gone up, or is it staying the same?
Well, we typically, on an annual basis, do see an increase from GLWA, and 4% was kind of the target mark for what communities would see on an annual basis. Past that, they look at Madison Heights and some other factors that go in, the two numbers in the contract there as well. And Melissa could be happy to dive in on how we set the rates based on that, but they've stayed consistent with that in terms of what it's going to take to deliver water to all of their member communities, and they've basically set the rates at that number. I don't know if that answered the question completely, but...
I got a, last question. I know that they had a program where they compensated for, I think they gave $25 a month for water bills if you qualified. Is that still in existence?
Yes, we still offer that plan. It's called the RAP plan.
RAP, yes. But that's part of the GLWA, correct?
Yes.
You don't foresee that going away?
Going away, no. That's one program they do pride themselves on.
But I think that's for a two-year maximum, isn't it?
People can get renewed on that program if they have more income need, but it's also more than $25 a month. They pay a past due balance, but you have to stay current on your bills during that period. So, if you qualify, they'll pay $25, they pay a lump sum, depending on how much your bill is, but then they'll pay half of your bill, and then they pay $25 a month, and then they'll pay the rest of that if you've complied with what you've agreed to when you, they are accepted into the program. And that's supposed to continue under GLWA's new contracts.
I promise, one last question, because that reminds me, I know before, we talked about this, in fact, we passed that ordinance where we will not shut up for late payment or non-payment for water, which I think is a great thing. But I remember before, the number, like around $700,000 delinquency for water? Is that the same amount now, or?
It was slightly less this year. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it wasn't significantly different than it has been in the past. So, it was a little less, but I don't know exactly how much.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Other discussion from council? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next report on the agenda is item D3 from the city attorney and the police chief regarding the renewal of the entertainment agreement with the Venetian Club. Mrs. Marsh?
In December of 1999, the city and the Venetian Club of Mutual Aid Doing Businesses Club Venetian, located at 29320 John R. Road, entered into a restated agreement for entertainment permits. The First Amendment to this agreement was executed in 2008, provided for the council to review the dance entertainment permits and all other license issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and the agreement on or about December 1st, 2009, and every two years thereafter. The city attorney's office and police department have no objections to the continuation of the agreement as requested with a recommended term of two years. If council concurs, the appropriate action would be to continue the agreement for additional two-year term with the next review occurring on or about December 1st, 2020.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we continue the agreement for an additional two years, with the next review taking place on or around December 1st, 2020.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Corbett, to continue the entertainment agreement with Club Venetian for another two-year term, with the next review occurring on or about December 1st, 2020. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda, you could skip ahead, it goes to minutes. We have three sets of minutes tonight. Can I have a motion regarding the special city council minutes of 10:29?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I move that the council approve the minutes as printed from the special meeting of October 29th, 2018 of the council.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion regarding approving the minutes from the special meeting of 10:29, 18? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the minutes from the special joint city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move that the council approve as printed the minutes of the special joint city council meeting of November 8, 2018.
Very good. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion regarding approving the minutes of the special joint city council minutes of 11:8, 18? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. And finally, can I have a motion regarding the regular city council meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll go for the hat-trick.
Hat-trick.
Move that the council approve the regular city council minutes as printed from November 12, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mrs. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to adopt as printed the regular council minutes of 11, 12, 18? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. There's one important appointment, and it's not a mayor's appointment, it's just a council appointment of John Woolsey to the tax board to review. It would be a two-year term expiring January, when, 2021?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council reappoint John Woolsey to a term on the tax board to review. That term will expire 1/1/21.
Is there a second?
Your honor.
Yes, Mr. Soltis?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on reappointing John Woolsey to a two-year term to the tax board to review, term to expire January 1, 2021? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. There's no other business for this meeting, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of council. This will be a clean break. We're adjourning this meeting, and we're going to start a second meeting with an opportunity for people to address city council at the second meeting. But this first meeting, we're going to adjourn after these closing comments. Mr. Corbett?
I thought that was a closed meeting after this. Am I wrong?
It's a separate...
Oh, that's, okay, never mind. I just thought of the agenda and where it fits in there. Okay, I understand your point, but...
Let me tell everyone what we're talking about. The city posted two public meetings for tonight. The first meeting was the regular meeting at 7:30, and the second meeting was posted to occur after the close of this first meeting. So, it's just two separate meetings. So, this first meeting, we're going to adjourn, because there's no further business, and then we'll start the second meeting in the executive conference room to discuss a legal opinion. And just like any special meeting with our attorney, there is a meeting open to the public section. But for this meeting, this is just the regular meeting. We'll adjourn in a few minutes, but only after closing comments. Mr. Corbett, please begin.
Yeah, just a couple of items this evening. Congratulations to the Madison Eagles on a great game this past weekend. Saturday happened to be the day of the Goodfellas sale, so I was trying to run in between houses or buildings that had cable and had Fox on, and then I had a stubborn phone, so it was tough to keep up with the scores on the Fox app. But that was a great game. Congratulations to Coach Rogers, to the quarterback, young fellow Brown, Austin Brown, I believe is his name. Great leadership on the field and a great effort. It came down to who had the ball last, and unfortunately, it wasn't Madison. wasn't Madison. But a great effort, 50 to 44, I believe, was the score. Continuing the Madison theme, I had the pleasure of attending the swearing-in this afternoon of four members of the Madison School Board here at City Hall. Good luck to them. I know we got off to a little bit of a rocky start, but I'm sure we'll be fine. Everybody seems to be dedicated and interested in furthering the school district, and it will be a rough transition, I assume. But hopefully, a few months from now, things will be moving along, and we'll all be on the same page. And I certainly, I'm certainly quite certain, I speak on behalf of council, where any effort and any support we can give to them, we certainly would be happy to. It's, it's in the interest of the children and the community as a whole. Just a reminder that on Fridays from 1 to 3, I'm over at the library, and if anybody wants to come in and complain or compliment, compliments are accepted too, and, or just discuss issues that are in front of us. So that's all I have. Happy holiday season. I hope everyone is safe, and that's all I have now, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor. So echoing the same sentiment as Councilman Corbett, the Madison football team did an incredible job. I think that was actually the highest-scoring finals ever. I think I read that in the paper. And so it's just an incredible, incredible feat. They came up just a little bit short, but they were still the second-best team. So I don't want to lose that. I'd like to request that we offer and invite the football team here. Let's give them a congratulatory resolution. Let's, let's make sure that we celebrate the ginormous achievement that this was. I also want to thank everybody, all the volunteers or community groups that helped put on the tree lighting today. It was a little colder than I think any of us would like. That wind was, was brutal, but we still had, I think, 300 people come out, was, was the estimate. And so it was a good time had by all. I thank the band for playing, and just thank everybody for coming out, participating, and especially for everybody who worked. My last point tonight, we, we went through the, the audit review. For those following along, I mean, there's a lot of positive news in the stability of the city, but stability isn't necessarily positive. Stability signals a lack of growth, and with the major challenge that our auditors highlighted, with those long-term unfunded liabilities, it puts us at major risk as we go into the future. You heard it from our auditors, the state's likely not coming to the rescue. And the old Headley Amendment is, is limiting revenue, particularly property tax revenue has been so consistent over the past five years, and our resident tax rates are among the highest in the area. So another millage is not a viable option without really hurting those on a fixed income. And so to me, growth is the only real solution. And so this is my call to action. I'm hoping that we can start leading in this area. I'm proud that the Planning Commission is recommending a new master plan be done for the first time in decades. We are actually going to update that plan. That will come before council. I would encourage my colleagues to, to vote to approve that, to allocate the funds for us to proactively invest in, in economic development and proactively plan. You know, the goal has to be to bring in more redevelopment. And we also have to market to the businesses that our residents are looking for. That's going to include new industries and business types that we don't currently have in the city. We also have to focus on our strengths and actually advertise them. We have incredible strengths. We have proximity to freeways that other communities would, I mean, are incredibly jealous of. We have unprecedented ease of opening up a business in our city. We don't have pointless delays or red tape that just clogs up the process, and that's an incredible thing for us to share. And then also, our dense concentration of Asian-owned businesses is a major, major draw into the area. And so we need to advertise all of those points and many more much more aggressively. And I concur with Mayor Hartwell that we should designate an Asia Town in the city to be able to highlight the pride that we have for our more than 200 Asian-owned businesses in the city. That's an incredible feat, and we have to advertise that. And I think any investment that we would make there, so long as we do it right, and we don't jump into anything, and we actually thoroughly vet it and plan it, will have a return on investment, a significant one, and help bring in the revenue that'll allow us to handle our long-term unfunded liabilities. It'll also help give us the resources to make our city safer, adding investments into public safety, and also improve the quality of life of our residents by investing in programming, parks, and libraries, things that we can't do right now because we're hamstrung by those unfunded liabilities and the lack of growth. So I said last meeting that I'm committed to giving City Manager Marsh the tools and resources that she, that we, that our staff, that council, that our residents need in order to achieve our goals. And to me, a focus on redevelopment, economic development, and a strategy for planning should be the top of the list. And I'm asking for my colleagues' support. I'm asking for all of us to make this our number-one priority as we go through the rest of this strategic goal session and start planning what the next decade or two decades is going to look like. So when I see this chart, next, next five years, looking past in five years, we're able to see growth. We're able to see these numbers tick up, and we're able to actually see how we're going to get out of this unfunded liability mess that is coming at some point. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Giddings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate the Madison Eagle football team for their accomplishments. Second time they made it to the state finals. They had an incredible year. They had some talented ball players, good coaching staff. The community was very much behind them as they celebrated down in forefield. Again, as Bob and Mark said, they came up a little short, but they still had an incredible season. To the DPS, Joe Vitali and the staff, to all the volunteers for making the tree lighting, to Gary McGilvery and Mrs. Claus, the great job they did making a nice evening for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I want to wish all of our citizens a happy holiday season. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
I just want to start by thanking the finance department. Every year, we get a clean audit opinion, and that's really attributable to the integrity and hard work of the, the team that we have in our finance department here. And also, a great event for the tree lighting, so thank you to the DPS and those Lampir students that looked like they were freezing. They did a great job. So thanks, it was very nice, a good turnout.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mrs. Prince? Mrs. Grafstein?
I just want to also congratulate the Madison Eagles and thank everyone who came out tonight for the tree lighting, and thank you, Santa and Mrs. Claus, for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to again thank the, our DPS department for remarkably decorating the city so beautifully. I know that took a lot of time, and it was in the cold and not very kind weather. So I appreciate all the work that they do for us around here and sticking close to making Madison Heights a beautiful place. The seniors are going to be going out on the night of December 18th at 5:30, and we will be judging and looking at all the beautiful displays that are up by our residents, and then awarding some awards to, you know, the top three winners, giving them a little plaque and commendation so that we appreciate all the work that all our citizens do. But the seniors will be judging that on December 18th, so make sure you have your lights on and your decorations up by then. Thank you very much for that. And I want to also acknowledge again Councilman, former Councilman Kyle Gerald and his excellent students. I was so impressed, I went to visit their class, and I was so impressed by what they were learning and the fact that Kyle has taken, taking their minds and putting them in a positive that you, yes, you can make a difference. If you believe in what you have studied, you can make a difference by saying, and I all applaud all those students that came up tonight. I know it was a, is a scary event, but they all did wonderfully. And I know whenever I need information, what really going on, I ask my grandchildren because they know better than anybody else in the city. And I love their opinions, and I have a lot of interesting talks with my grandchildren because they are on a level that is an upcoming level, and it's our future. And I wanted to do right by them, so I applaud Kyle again for thanking us, talk to our youth, and for their very kind notes, too, as well. We will save them. Also, the Economic Development Authority is having a Creative Art on Fire High Hydrant Art Challenge, Art Exhibit and Reception, and that will be on Thursday, September, I'm sorry, Thursday, December 6th, and that will be from 5:30 to 7:00. So I know we're going to honor our students again who have contributed to our arts. And there will be a meeting of the Arts Council tomorrow night, the Arts and Culture Board, and it begins at 6:45, and you're all welcome to comment. We'll be in the council chambers in the other room there. So I hope you could all come by and give us your opinion. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, I, I had the fortunate pleasure to attend a fundraiser for the Michigan MAP. It was a Michigan abolitionist project. It's an anti-human trafficking organization. Fabulous turnout. And the guest speaker, her name was Joyce Dixon Haskett, was a phenomenal speaker. She talked about her human trafficking as a so-called prisoner for 17 years, and she discussed it in length, and it was quite amazing. It was a miracle that she pulled through. But it's a great organization if you want to donate and be a part of the anti-human trafficking, which is a problem in most cities, plus yours. You know, you can contact them. On a happy note, so the Madison Heights Youth Assistance is putting on, I guess, the first time, the Grinch Candy Cane Hunt. It's Saturday, December 1st, from noon to about 1:30, again, at the Madison Heights Public Library. Chief of Police Cory Haynes is the one that's going to read the book, and the one who's going to be the Grinch in the costume is me. So they recruited me, and it's quite the costume, let me tell you. So a little here, a little noted about it, it said, "The Grinch discovered that youth assistance has hidden some candy canes, along with some special candy canes outside into the public library." The Grinch, i.e. me, is planning on finding out, finding the candy canes and turning them all green, which, that's not going to happen, kids. To get this event started, we'll be reading The Grinch Stole Christmas, and afterwards, they go find out the candy canes, and if they want, they can take a picture with the Grinch. So it's free, but I think you have to register by tomorrow, end of tomorrow. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, I'm so moved. We're in the presence of so many retired elected officials. Mayor Jack Lloyd from Hazel Park has been with us, the biggest fan of Madison Heights that doesn't live in Madison Heights. We have... The city is a great city. Thank you, Mayor Jack Lloyd. We're also in the presence of the extinguished Jeffrey Gerald, former school board trustee, and of course, his son, former city councilman Kyle Gerald, who brought his students to us tonight. I'm sure I'll regret this analogy, but it's nice to see so many escaped convicts. The joy in your face as you find ways to lead the community outside of public office inspires all of us. Thank you for keeping an eye on us, and our ears are always open to your wisdom outside of these chambers, but thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Soltis, for that really rousing invocation tonight, just to remind us of Mother Teresa. You said Saint Teresa, her words that, you know, "Our best judgment will be how we treated the poor and the downtrodden and those without." And so let's remind that during this season. You know, I'm also moved by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss's words. I just put you on the same level as Saint Mother Teresa. But Mayor Pro Tem Bliss...
Maybe like a few thousand rings lower.
Okay, okay, okay. But Mayor Pro Tem Bliss is right. We cannot, the city faces financial challenges. We cannot tax ourself out of that. We can't cut ourself out of that. The Great Recession really cut our city operations down to the bone. Just ask DPS, just ask the city hall workforce. We just don't have enough boots on the ground to handle the workload we need. And like Mr. Bliss said, our residents probably cannot handle a greater tax burden. You know, we're already one of the highest millages in the county. And I'm also worried about the announcement in the news today. You saw it in the Detroit News and Free Press and across the country of GM announcing major layoffs. They're laying off 15% of their salaried workforce. This council knows very well, 1,000 of our residents are active UAW members and retirees, and so some of the plants that are going to be affected in the next 12 months are in Warren and Hamtramck. So I'm sure many of our residents are going to lose their job. So I'd like the city, I know it's not our traditional role, but to find some way to, to, I mean, we're not going to retrain these workers, but to maybe use our website or something, our message boards to alert our public to job opportunities or retraining opportunities. I'm sure the state and other private agencies will help. But if Madison Heights could be the message board, the messenger, to try to find our residents their next stable income source. But, you know, Mr. Bliss is right. You know, to be the city of progress, we have to find new ways to fund the services our residents demand. And look at the success we've had about how creative the Downtown Development Board has been. You know, we've had a Downtown Development Authority for 20 years. You may not have noticed. But the new Downtown Development Funding Plan is exciting, and just in year one, we've gained a lot of attention. You know, there's new businesses that have moved in. We approved the license for a microbrewery. We approved a special liquor license for a new barbecue joint who redeveloped the shuttered VFW hall. JJ's Bar is expanding to have an art studio and a live performance space. We even have a pie-in-the-sky idea developer to redevelop Levin and John R. with a high-rise multi-use, mixed-use development. We'll see where that discussion goes. But it took the public, we had a town hall at Wilkinson Middle School, what, two, three summers ago, and the elected and appointed officials, we listened to the public, and we took their message. Try something new, do something exciting, focus on marketing, focus on attracting new types of businesses. And just in year one, we've had amazing success about expanding the tax base of the downtown of Madison Heights. And there are other opportunities, like Mr. Bliss and others have recommended before. We need to advertise better the Asian community in Madison Heights. I mean, almost 20% of our residents were born in a foreign country, and yet 500 minority-owned businesses, 200 are Asian-American-owned businesses. This is a marketing opportunity we have not seized upon. Businesses and people with expendable income have realized that Madison Heights is Asia Town. We just need to do a better job marketing that. And I believe that's one way to expand the tax base. But yeah, we need to think outside of the box. It can't be status quo. It can't be business as usual. And I, you know, I believe in the city council. I believe in this administration. We're, we're looking for new ideas, and I think next year's going to be a great year for our city. But tonight, there's no other business before city council for this regular council meeting, so this meeting is adjourned. We'll start the special meeting in about 10 minutes.